All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to today's Monroe County Council meeting. It is Tuesday, June 24th, and the time is 5:03. I'm Jennifer Crossley. You are President of the Council. And looking to my right, I would like to note for the record that we have Councilors Hawke, Henry, Iverson, and we also have Deckard and Fidel. Absent today is Counselor Wilt. Next up, we will go ahead and move forward with our Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Next up is the adoption of our agenda. And do we have any amendments to tonight's agenda? Looks like items 7A and 7B will need to be tabled from the Health Department will need to be tabled indefinitely. Are there any other items related to the agenda that needs to be amended? Okay. And so if... Are we good with the... Are you... Okay. All right. So, all those in favor of adopting tonight's agenda with the tabling of the Health Department, items 7A and 7B signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right. So ordered. Next up, we will move on to item number four for a public comment. These are for public comments for items that are not on the agenda. So if you are here in the Natu Hill Room, you can come forward to the lectern and sign in, and you'll have up to three minutes to make your public comment. And if you are virtually and would like to make a public comment, you can raise your hand via Teams. So if anybody is present in the Natu Hill Room and would like to make public comment, you can go ahead and come forward. Shocker. And looking at Teams, I don't see anybody's hand raised via Teams. No public comment. Okay. Next up, we will have department updates, and this is for departments of the county to come to the County Council and give an up... provide an update of what's going on. So you have up to 10 minutes for each department to make their comments. So do we have any departments that would like to make an update? Oh, I see somebody walked in. Wherever you would like.
Hi, Bobby LaRue, Monroe County Building Department. Just wanted to share briefly with you what we've been doing with storm response through the county. Couple different processes. If the Commissioners have declared an emergency for the event, power companies have been given authorization to restore power as quickly as possible to these buildings. That happens generally when buildings haven't taken a lot of damage. The power company can assess that the building is safe to restore power. And we follow that up with... We'll go out and do inspections for buildings that have taken a little bit more damage and work with folks to get to get power restored. If there's not a declared emergency, like a heat wave or something like that, that is causing significant disruption to folks' power, we simply ask that they apply for the permit, and then, once the application's in place, we will go out and perform inspections to get to get power restored as quickly as possible. In situations like this week, we have long sustained power draws on equipment, and as equipment ages, I'm breaking more the older I get, too, right? So we do that. And then, just wanted to talk really briefly about, like, long-term. I think you'll remember about 18 months ago, we adjusted permitting for repair of an existing building that's taken storm damage. So in that case, when you make the application to repair a building, if you are repairing it, and this really is more about single-family homes, things that fall under Indiana's residential code, if you're repairing what you had before, right? You're trying to build your house back to what it was before the storm, in the application process, need to check the box and put in the date of the storm event, and we will move through those as quickly as we absolutely can. And there is a reduced permit fee, really just to cover administrative costs to do that. And then we'll go out and do inspections as we normally would. If you are repairing what Indiana calls a Class 1 structure, so the easiest way to describe it is anything that's not a single-family home, a duplex, or a townhouse, the process is, it takes a little longer and will involve some, in many cases, will involve a portion of the permit to come from the State of Indiana's Department of Homeland Security. But we are, we will process those as quickly as we possibly can and get out as well to do the inspections. So I think, for the most part, it's worked fairly well. Obviously, we always want to do things better, and we will continue to work to be able to do things better and more efficiently. So I just wanted to take a few minutes. I'm sure you have a long agenda tonight, but just wanted to let you all know what we were up to.
We appreciate that. Thank you. Real quick, since we have a little bit more time left in your update, does anybody have any questions for Ms. LaRue?
Yeah, Counselor.
Thank you very much. It is always good to hear the way you talk about these things. I think you make a process that's not always as clear to the average person, a lot clearer. I have just two things, and you can always respond to this later and get back to me if that's easier. If the county were to, in a situation like this, where people were applying for a permit under the duress of some sort of post-crisis event, if the county were to waive that and we were to offset that cost, could you perhaps tell us a rough cost on what that might be? So if Council were to look at the permitting fee itself, if we were to figure out a different way to pay that and not have that fee imposed, what might that be? Am I being clear on that? And I can always...
I think you're being clear on that. I would, I would ask for a little bit of time to kind of sort through that. So the storm, for a single-family home, the storm reconstruction permitting fee is $100, which is essentially the, I mean, it's, I think it's the least expensive permit that we, one of the least expensive permits that we have. I'd like a little more time on, if you'd like to do something other than that.
Yeah. And roughly ballpark what that might be is something, and I don't expect you to have that tonight. And then, you know, the other question is, if we had an estimate, estimate on time from, average estimate of time, applications made, application granted, roughly, if we could, if you could advise on that down the road, I'd be interested in that as well.
I'm happy to work on that. We work with several different departments, and so actually pinning down one number that works across the board might be a little challenging there as well.
I got you.
But I certainly can talk to you about, you know, how long it takes the Building Department to process applications. But the portion of the permit, that is, the Building Department's portion, you know, we have a lot of other releases and reviews that kind of plug into that in that process. I do know that any time we talk to folks about response from storms, we, every department that I've spoken with works diligently to move those along very quickly.
Thank you very much. And we can keep talking around that. And I don't expect you to have all those answers right here, but I am interested in those things and what we might, how we can, on our end, do things to support that, make it easier as you're doing that, easier for them as they're encountering it in a harsh, harsh time. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, Counselor Hawke.
Yes, I'd just like to say that I appreciate you coming and sharing information with us tonight and with the public. I think it would be really great if we could look at ways that would help your department, as well as the other departments, move the whole process as quickly as possible, so that people, and not just for the storm-related, but just in general. If someone wants to build a house, or they want to build a garage, whatever, it seems, you hear a lot about how long they're having to wait for the permitting process, and so they think it's the Building Department that's pulling them, you know, taking so much time. But as he said, they're working with other departments as well. But we really need to assist the people of Monroe County to be able to move forward with their plans without major delays. So I thank you for coming forward tonight.
To that, to that, and there has been some legislation that's been passed by the state that all of the departments are working on with the same goal, to move permits a bit quicker. Obviously, you know, our, our hope is that we move things quickly, but also provide people appropriate guidance on how to comply and help people comply with the requirements for the code. And, you know, the review process is really designed to help people answer questions before they've built them, right? But to your point, we are working already on how to, how to move permits a little bit quicker. And it may get to a lot quicker, so.
All right. Well, thank you very much for that update. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Have a good evening. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Is there any other departments here in the Natu Hill Room or on Teams that would like to give an apartment update? Either come to the lectern here or raise your hand via Teams. Seeing none, we will move on. All right. Thank you very much for all of that. And then next up is our consent agenda items.
Council, I move to approve the following consent agenda items for June 24th. A, approval of Council summary minutes for May 13th and May 27th, 2025. And B, the Health Department's request in Fund 8111-9623 Crisis Coag Support Workforce to create account lines 10118, Public Health Coordinator 10183, Public Health Preparedness Director 18101, FICA, and 18201, PERF. And to simultaneously approve a category transfer of $65,400 from the Services category to the Personnel category. And C, the Probation Department's request in Fund 1237-0000, opioid restricted, to create account lines 11470, CASP Director 18101, FICA, and 18201, PERF. And to simultaneously approve a category transfer of $50,000 from the Services category to the Personnel category.
Second.
All right. We got a motion and a second. And is there any questions or comments from the Council? Looking down here to my right, seeing none, and looking to my left, and also seeing none. All right. If there is any public comment that would like to be made on our consent agenda items, either you can come forward to the lectern here in the Natu Hill Room, or you can raise your hand via Teams. And since we are all here in person, we can do a voice vote. So, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda items as presented signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right. Thank you very much. Motion carries. Next up, we are going to not have 7A and 7B, because at the beginning of the meeting, we had those tableed indefinitely. So next up, we will go to item number eight, which is new business, and it is the Health Department.
Council, I move to approve the Health Department's request to amend the 2025 salary ordinance in Fund 8113-9623 Crisis Coag Support Workforce to add account lines 10118, Public Health Coordinator Pat B., 35 hours exempt, and 10183, Public Health Preparedness Director Pat D., 40 hours exempt.
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. And just to add a note, if anybody's following and paying attention, we did have some consent agenda items that is related to this, this item of discussion here, and that was item 6B. So just wanted to add that. But I do think that Ms. Kelly is online, and if she is ready to present.
Yes. Good evening. So this request is to move two of our positions who are working in public health emergency preparedness. The reason for this is legislative changes that have recently occurred, requiring Health First Indiana dollars can only be spent on Indiana residents who are lawfully in the United States. So just given the nature of the work with these positions, this request is being made to move it into different funds that don't carry those restrictions, just to make sure that we can provide these services to all individuals.
Thank you much. Ms. Kelly, and going to look over to my left here and see if anybody has any questions or comments for Ms. Kelly on this item. Seeing none. To my right? Yeah. Counselor Iverson.
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Kelly, thank you so much for joining us virtually. And as one of the liaisons to the Health Department, I am in support of this, as it will allow your department and your staff to provide services to all Indiana residents. And we're so thankful that we're able to work with you in doing this. Thank you for bringing this important topic to our attention and allowing us to be part of this important work in not leaving out anybody from valuable public health services.
Counselor Henry.
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Kelly, so in moving the salaries, I appreciate what we're trying to do there in terms of preserving the preparedness work. Since the preparedness work isn't part of the HFI Corps Services moving forward under the Governor's new initiative on this particular health question, for supplies, training, exercises, the things that the Preparedness folks do to anticipate things like pandemic and disease outbreak, are there plans for how we're going to fund those activities if the state isn't, aside from the salary lines here? I'm just kind of curious where you think the program will go.
Sure. So there's funding that's available in these grant funds as well that we can use for services and supplies. We also have, I can't remember the fund number for some reason off the top of my head, but we have some reserve funding, $20,000 for emergency situations, that was actually from old state funding, so local health maintenance funding that doesn't carry these restrictions. And we have funding that is in our County Fund 1159 that helps support costs such as mileage and training. We are anticipating getting grant funding that also supports this program. It's going to be reduced from what we're anticipating, but we are still expecting some of that funding, which we will also be able to use to kind of bridge some of those gaps.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Kelly? Seeing none, we will move on to a public comment. If you have a public comment on this particular item, again, please come forward to the lectern here in the Natu Hill Room or raise your hand via Teams. Seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Fidel?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. Next up, we got item B.
Council, I move to approve the Health Department's request in Fund 9117-0000, Local Grants, to approve an additional appropriation, the amount of $454.96 in the Supplies category.
Second.
Ms. Kelly.
So this is a request to use remaining grant funds that was in, that was previously awarded in 2020 through the Sophia Travis. I'm not real familiar, just because I wasn't here at that time, about that grant. We just identified that the grant cycle had ended. There were remaining funds, so we wanted to request approval to use those funds and be able to expend them before the end of this year.
Thank you. And then, I think my understanding is, because this was some unspent money from the Sophia Travis Grant Committee, we've already, Commissioners, this had to go back to the Commissioners, and they've done what they needed to do. So this is like the final say again with the Council.
Correct. The Commissioners have amended the contract or MOU to allow for additional times, but it would be for the same purpose.
All right. Thank you, and I appreciate us looking to getting that money that was awarded being spent. So appreciate that. Any other questions for Ms. Kelly on this particular item? Looking to my left, seeing none. And looking to my right, seeing none. All right. It is back to the public again for this item. If you have a comment on this item, please come forward to the lectern here in the Natu Hill Room, or you can raise your hand via Teams. And still seeing none, because everybody is outside hot. May we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Fidel?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
No.
Motion passed five to one.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kelly. All right. We have no business in our presentation discussions, and that's item number nine. So we will move on to County Council business, which is item 10.
Council, I move to open for discussion and approval, Resolution 2025-27, approving the 2026 minimum cash balances.
Second.
All right. We got a motion and a second, and I will look to Ms. Molly Turner King.
So this is the resolution that was discussed at the last meeting regarding establishing a 2026 minimum cash balance. The last meeting, I had stated that FSG had not had the opportunity to review that resolution yet. So I provided to FSG, they provided some advice, concerns, which I forwarded to you. I think their concerns, their suggestions was to reduce our minimum balance in a couple of the accounts.
All right. Thank you very much. And looking to my right to see if there's any questions or comments. Yes, Counselor Iverson.
My question is from Ms. Molly Turner King. Aside from the changes that you just indicated, were there any other substantive changes to this document from what we considered last or two weeks ago?
No, there's been no substantive changes, and actually, there's been no changes. I left the amount, the exact same that you seen last time, provided you the feedback from FSG. And if you want to incorporate FSG's feedback, I'm happy to amend the resolution to reflect such.
Thank you so much.
Yes, Counselor Fidel. So I wonder if you could just highlight what those changes were that FSG, do you have record of that, so we can discuss that here publicly?
So the first change was that FSG recommended in the third whereas clause that bonding rating management be changed to bonding rating agency. The more substantive changes occur in the exhibit. So the first change was the exhibit originally reflects that Fund Number 1176 Motor Vehicle Highway would have a minimum cash balance of $1 million, and FSG recommends that be $750,000. For the Health Fund, 1159, the minimum in the resolution currently is $1 million. FSG recommended $500,000. And then, in the Election Fund, the same, the minimum was $1 million, and FSG recommended $500,000.
And was there any rationale on those suggestions?
FSG did not provide any. It was just the handwritten note on the side of the resolution.
So that's what we were shared with before, right?
Correct. Okay.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes, I think the change in the Motor Vehicle Highway was probably in response to the Highway Director's concerns, because she does watch those numbers carefully, and she doesn't want to leave any money on the table unnecessarily if she has potholes fill or whatever she plans to get done with that. However, we want to make sure we stay in good standing with when we try to get, kind of get a loan. So that, I think, is a part of it. I do want to make sure that even though we've passed this, when we get ready to do our budgets and we know how much we've got to put in all of those that are in the frozen levy, if that starts eating into how we're going to operate, I think we have to have the opportunity to at least keep an eye on that. Because otherwise, we may be spending money to make it look like it's rainy day for every, everything in the frozen levy and not have the dollars we need in County General to do what we need to do.
That's a good point. Thank you for bringing that up. Anybody else have any other questions or comments related to this item? Oh, Counselor Iverson.
So I would be interested, given what we're hearing from the Long Term Finance Committee, in entertaining FSG's recommendation to reduce the three levels for the minimum cash balance. But before I make that, Madam President, I did notice the auditor had her hand raised, and I don't want to get out in front of my skis.
Okay. Ms. Gregory, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I did review all of these closely, and particularly, I looked at the end of May this year, just to see kind of where our lowest level would be, that's before settlement. And all of the funds were above the minimum and historically have been above the minimum that we have here for your review. The only area I disagree slightly with FSG is the Election Fund. I don't know that we would ever want that to dip down to $500,000. And I know that's the minimum, but we like to keep that relatively consistent so we don't have to have a spike for those big election years in the levy. So, just a thought.
Yeah. Counselor Hawke.
Yes, and as a reminder, with that Election Fund, several years ago, we tried moving it from one fund to another, trying to set up a way that we would be prepared for the presidential election and not have to come up with all that money in one fell swoop in one year. And the states went, well, you can only have one rainy day fund, but we could have a separate election fund. And so we had tried to keep that, add to that balance every year, so when the fourth year came, we were ready. So if we let that get spent down, we just have to recognize when the fourth year comes, we have to come up with that money, whether it's setting in the Election Fund or not. Because if the, if Election Fund, that particular fund, we have to go ahead and cover it in County General if we don't, you know, we have to pay for the elections. So I think it's a mistake to let that fall down too far, because then we've got to figure out, you know, it'll be a surprise. Surprise this election year, come up with millions.
So would you go, so the auditor was just saying that she disagreed with it going down to the $500,000. Are you saying that you would be okay with it being still at the million?
I would be okay with it until we get ready to do the budgets and try to figure out where we're going to put the money and see where we are.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments related to that?
Yes, Ms. Gregory. I'd be much more comfortable around $750,000, kind of split the difference. We haven't dipped below that ever, as, I mean, as far as the three years. We haven't dipped below that ever, as, I mean, as far as the three years I went back anyhow, and so I think that would be reasonable, and we, we're going to reassess this annually, so we can revisit it then.
Okay. So we heard the auditor say that she would be comfortable at the 750,000. I would think that would be great. Anybody have any questions or comments to that? Counselor Iverson?
Madam President, may I make a friendly motion to that effect?
Sure.
Counsel, I move to amend this current resolution 2025-27 to set the 2026 minimum cash balance for Fund Number 1176 Motor Vehicle Highway to 750,000 dollars, 1159 Health to 500,000 dollars, and 1215 Election to 750,000 dollars.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this particular item?
Yes.
Thank you. I would just agree with my colleague, Counselor Hawk, on the revisiting during budget time on, I think especially the Election Fund, given that that particular department has some overages and other account lines that I think we're all taking a look at as we move ahead and think about our fiscal stewardship under SB one and moving forward. So I very much agree with that, and look forward to where we are, once we get under the hood of that particular department.
Thank you, and duly noted. All right, any other questions or comments on this item?
So, can I talk?
So, the, I noticed the motion did not include in the third whereas where management had been changed to agency. Are we comfortable with management staying or agency being replaced?
I will accept that as a friendly amendment to my amendment.
Okay.
Enter.
All right, we got the amendment to the amendment, to reflect those changes. Any other additional discussion on this item?
Nope.
Any public comment on this amendment, please come forward to the lectern here in the Nat U Hill Room, or raise your hand via Teams. Nope, the amendment. We'll get to that one here in a second. All right, so, is this something we can do a voice vote for? Okay. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, saying zon. All right, motion carries. Now coming back to the overall discussion of the item. Any other further discussion from council? And seeing none, and we got a friendly taker here in the Nat U Hill Room that would like to make a public comment on this. So if you are also wanting to make public comment on this, you can also come to the lectern here in the Nat U Hill Room, or you can raise your hand via Teams. And we have a taker and a friendly face to the Nat U Hill Room, please go ahead.
Good evening, council. Jeff McKim. Maintaining minimum cash balances is a prudent, forward-looking practice that both safeguards Monroe County's finances and signals that strength to the public. By establishing clear reserve targets for key operating funds, the council ensures uninterrupted services, timely payroll, and a buffer against revenue volatility. This discipline reduces the potential need for short-term inter-fund borrowing and sustains the county's record of strong bond ratings. The minimums set for each annually budgeted fund, particularly as recommended by FSG, are realistic and sensible, reflecting current revenue projections and spending patterns, as well as some concerns expressed about MBH and the auditor's comments about the Election Fund. Establishing a $10 million floor for the Rainy Day Fund makes a particularly strong statement. Monroe County holds reserves robust enough to weather unexpected policy shifts from the state or broader economic downturns. A formal reserve policy strengthens the county's position with ratings agencies and potential bond holders, reinforcing Monroe County's reputation as a well-managed, low-risk issuer. It provides the council with a clear, transparent framework for evaluating budget proposals, particularly helpful when faced with appropriation requests that could jeopardize long-term sustainability. Resolution 2025-27 therefore embodies sound fiscal stewardship and affirms the council's commitment to maintaining Monroe County's financial health and resilience in these uncertain times. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, any other public comment related to this item? Seeing none. We appreciate that public comment very much. May we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Fidel.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Hawk. Counselor Henry.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, thank you very much, colleagues, on that. And next up, we are moving on to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve Resolution 2025-29 Tax Abatement Compliance Findings.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second, and I'm going back to Ms. Molly Turner King.
So this is an item that I'm kind of pinching on, because this is usually a Jeff Cockrell thing. He's off in Germany, so here we are. This is the annual review of the compliance for tax abatements. What I will note is typically, the EDC reviews these. However, when we tried to hold an EDC meeting last week, we didn't have a quorum, so EDC did not have the opportunity to review these. However, statutorily, you have 45 days to approve them, once they're received or they're deemed approved. So if you do not take action tonight, by July 1st, these items are deemed to be approved. And the only one that Jeff Cockrell had mentioned that he was somewhat concerned was with, was Oliver Winery. However, since then, Oliver Winery has provided me updated information, which indicates that they have 65 full-time employees, and that is equivalent to a 5.2 million dollars in annual wages. I think Oliver Winery was also in question last year for substantial compliance, and what we determined was, the difference was because of the way they were calculating full-time employees, so the numbers that they provided, this, provided to me in email match what they had last year.
Okay. Thank you. So you, I'll just kind of start off with a question. So, I know we do this every single year, and I appreciate you getting put on the hot seat for this particular item. You said that we have 45 days, the, like, upon receipt to take action?
Correct. So it says no later than 40, the statute references no later than 45 days. The designating body may determine whether the property owner has substantially complied with the statement of benefits approved by this chapter. So agencies have until May 15th to submit their compliance forms, and then you have 45 days thereafter.
So, they, so, it wasn't like they just got this information last week and then they couldn't do it? So it almost sounds like it's been in receipt for a while, and they've just not met, and now we get to figure out how to do something with July 1st being next week?
I think, looking at the date that these were submitted, or at least the certifications, it looks like most of them came in on May 14th, and I think that we've been trying to hold an EDC meeting, but scheduling in the summer has been somewhat problematic.
Okay. I'm gonna look to my council colleagues to see if anybody else has any questions or comments related to this, and looking down to my right? Nope. Still like faces. To my left?
So, I'll say something. Is there any reticence for approving it, or is there a way to extend it? I don't, I don't know about that, or ask for an extension if there is reticence, I don't know.
Looking to Ms. Turner King on that one.
I don't see anything in the statute that would allow for the extension of the 45 days.
And when were we first notified about this?
That I can answer, because usually Jeff would have submitted and handled that, so I'm not sure when council office received the information.
Well, is, am I right in thinking that this is the first time it's been on our agenda, right?
Yeah.
So we've certainly had meetings within that 45 days, and somehow it's just not getting here.
That is all correct. But if we don't enact, and if there is no action that's taken, then this basically is like, you said it's approved, no matter what.
It would be deemed approved.
Say that one, sorry.
Go ahead.
Can you say that one more time slower?
So, what Jeff had advised and what the statute in essence says is that if you do not take action, they would be deemed approved after 45 days, and the action is either to approve them or to set a non-compliance hearing.
And did Jeff have a recommendation? Did I miss that? Did Jeff have a recommendation?
He did not. He just said if, he did not. Usually, they talk about this in the EDC.
Right. Counselor Hawk.
Did, I didn't notice that any of them were non-compliant.
I think that's correct. The only one Mr. Cockrell mentioned that he was concerned about was Oliver Winery, and they have, they have since provided an updated number, which is similar to what they had last year.
Right, so it seems to me our choice is to either go ahead and approve them, or just let the time expire and it will be deemed approved. And since we've not, you know, maybe we just want the time to expire and just let it go on, since we don't have perhaps all the information we'd like. But it doesn't look like, from what I'm hearing, that it's, there's any error there or something that's a red flag. But I think we might feel better to just let the time expire, and in the meantime, I just want to say thank you to all the businesses that come and help support Monroe County, so.
Yeah, I agree with that. I, I think it's, we're kind of putting, I agree that we don't have any businesses that are not in compliance, but it also makes me feel some kind of way, getting something at the last minute, and this particular, like, they haven't, this particular body hasn't met. And so, and with July 1st looming, and knowing the statute of the 45-day time limit, that's a little frustrating, to be honest, but I'm willing to do what we can for the sake of these businesses being able to go forward and do what they have to do, so. Yes, Counselor Deckard.
I agree with Counselor Hawk, that if there's concern that we don't have enough information, the 45-day delay, as long as there would be no repercussions to it, given that what we're looking at looks like there's no compliance issues, I, I, I would be fine with that. And also, based on us reading this and not seeing a compliance problem, I'd be okay moving forward today, but I would follow the will of the council. One thing I do want to say is, I think all of this is emblematic that we need to be a little bit more proactive on the county government side around economic development issues. For those of us that attended the Bloomington Economic Development Commission, or pardon me, Corporations Annual Luncheon Meeting, there were some alarming statistics that were offered. I'm gonna quote from the B-Square Bulletin, Mr. Askins here, but Phil Powell spoke about a 7.7% decline in residents aged 25 to 44 since 2019. That's a lot of younger or, or starting workforce individuals. Idealistically, compliance and us being proactive towards all of these issues would be much more proactive in, in the process, because we got to be out there, not only making sure folks are compliant, but asking people, such as the ones on that list, what is it that's keeping you from being even more successful here? Who else is not at the table? And county can't, we can't afford to just sit and kind of wait for the flies to land on the courthouse and hope one of them's got a hundred dollar bill strapped to its leg. I mean, folks, we've got some population issues here, housing issues and other things too, so I apologize for going on so long, but we, we gotta get it together here, and if this were other counties, I think they would have on that. Thank you.
Counselor Henry.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate all those comments, and sometimes we are a little trapped in red tape of our own making, I think, in this building. So I have two specific questions to narrow on here that I, I'm not, I just needed some clarity on. So, the, the document as presented indicates that companies listed below are noted with an X or in substantial compliance, and yet there are no X's next to the names of the companies. Ms. Turner King, is that an oversight in the draft of the resolution? Are there supposed to be X's next to these names of the companies?
I think the resolution was drafted with the intent of the EDC reviewing them and indicating that they, because I think, if you look at the agenda request, it indicates that EDC met and then met and agrees that these people or these businesses were in compliance, and so I don't think the X's are there, because there was no EDC meeting.
Okay, all right, there's that. And the second question is, in terms of process, are these businesses noticed that they have a pending filing, or is it just expected they file, and they know to file once a year? I mean, do we notice them, or the?
I am not sure on that, but I can happily look it up and get back to you.
There's two very surgical process questions. It may hope to cut some of the, the tape of our own designs, so thank you, Madam President. I share the sentiment of the board, I think I'm happy to move with letting it expire and therefore be adopted on its own.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes, I'd like to comment that many times, the different companies that, that receive this assistance really want to come and talk to us, and have a chance to talk to the public. And were they even notified, we, you know, this is not the business's fault at all. And so, for those people who might have wanted to share the success of their business and the growth of their company, they were not notified, so they could come and share with us. And I think every time we can root for the home team and get the jobs here, we need to make sure that is utmost in our minds. That's what we're supposed to be doing, so. I don't want to do anything to slow the businesses down, but I'm just, sorry that they didn't get an opportunity to come and talk about their company.
Yep, I agree, because that's something that happens every year. Okay, so, the next thing is, I, I guess my question to you, Ms. Turner King, is if we, we don't take action, and it will just, so basically, if we, what am I trying to say here? If we don't, if we, do we need to vote yes, and/or do we, what do we need to do?
The motion's to approve Resolution 2025-29, so if you're not going to take action, then I think you would take a vote on that motion and then potentially offer a different motion.
Okay. All right. Counsel. Counselor Hawk, using rank.
This, this county council takes no action, what, what kind of motion are you thinking we should have? I don't think we've ever done this.
I mean, you could make a motion to take no action, or you could just take no action, you just have to resolve the motion on the floor, which is to approve Resolution 2025-27.
So essentially what you're saying, if we, because the motion is presented, we've already, we have a motion on the floor, which is to approve this resolution, if we all vote six zero to, or zero six to not approve it, and there is no action, technically, our vote would almost be like a no action, and then it's approved automatically, is what you're saying?
Correct.
But a person who put the motion on the floor could withdraw the motion, the second could be withdrawn, and we're done.
Yeah, I, if I had, if I had my druthers, I'd recommend Counselor Iverson, who offered the motion, withdraws motion, I think I, maybe I was the second, or I'm pretty sure, withdraw, and I'd rather do that than a no motion that could be interpreted poorly the, in the future.
Counsel, I move to withdraw my motion.
Counsel, I move to withdraw my motion to approve Resolution 2025-29 tax abatement compliance findings.
I consent to that.
All right. Any other additional questions or concerns from counsel? So, motion has been withdrawn. All right. That was interesting. Okay. Yeah, I just, again, I want to reiterate to Counselor Hawke's point, if any of the businesses that are watching, this is not to, I hope this isn't to think that, you know, we're doing something against you or penalizing you at all. So I just wanted to reiterate that. So thanks to Counselor Hawke for making that comment. All right, next up on the agenda is our favorite time of our meetings, which are council liaison updates and comments. So I will look to our left because I already see her paper rolling.
Alert coded.
So I will look to Counselor Fidel to give her bi-weekly update on what's been going on in the county.
So I took a little bit of time and visited the Indiana Limestone Symposium this year. Again, they carve one day up to two weeks, and they also serve ages 10 to 17. And when I spoke to one of the leaders there, they wanted to remind me that next year, in 2026, is the 30th anniversary of the Indiana Limestone Symposium here locally, and it's also the 100th anniversary of Indiana limestone in the state. So they just wanted me to highlight that. I am serving on the search committee to fill a county council staff position opening. We'll be interviewing four candidates early July, and I'm contacting references for some of those. The Monroe County Women's Commission meeting got postponed due to a storm on June 18. Then I attended a State Board of Accounts Budget and Finance meeting, as well as the Indiana County Council Association Conference on the 20th and the 21st. There are, they featured a lot of the issue of the 2025 legislative session impacts. And I'd like to suggest that if we think we have special circumstances, we might need to speak with Representative Jeff Thompson, who is the Chair of the House Ways and Means Committee. There was one subject that came up during the conference, which I thought was where they were mentioning, Brown County mentioned that they have 40% of their land in the state park there, and that lessens their ability to have tax funds as a result. So I don't know if we would want to think about anything like that to petition Attorney Thompson about that, considering we have a lot of IU and, and nonprofits like the hospital here that might fall in that same situation. So got to network with a lot, mainly at, at the end with similar-sized counties, the three that I met with, or with myself was one from Monroe, and then Madison and Hendrix Counties. And then this week, I went to the downtown Bloomington Board meeting. They're doing a huge market analysis, which is, was presented by Retail Strategies. And one thing that I think I would like to feature that I thought was very positive was the walkability assessment. And they rate, it rates a 92, which includes pathways, retail, restaurants, and so forth to keep people downtown. So I thought that was a good number to report. The Community Impact Survey they did, there were 180 responses, and parking was the biggest issue. Surprise, surprise. That's all I have.
Thank you. And as always, we always look forward to your updates. Counselor Deckard.
Thank you very much. And I'm trying to keep up with Counselor Fidel, so I made me a strong list this week. First, I want to offer congratulations to Eltsville on the dedication of their new Public Works facility. I've spent a little time in Eltsville in the last couple days and some time with some really great people over there. Lot to, lot, a lot of things happening, multiple things at once, it seems, and I wish all the best to folks over there. I also want to thank the Bloomington Elks for their Armed Services Memorial that they continue to add to in recognition of those who have served this community. I've got a family member, my stepdad, who's helped with that effort, and we're just very proud to see that. And for service members driving through town, stopping at that place, they see it so prominently there. As far as my council business, as mentioned earlier, I did attend the BDC State of the Economy Luncheon. It was a very animated discussion from the panelists, to say the very least. We do have a lot, a lot that we've got to think hard on related to those numbers and to be listening to our, our friends and folks in the business community who are looking for stability in all things in the government sector, whether it's federal, state, or local level. I'm committed to trying to figure out what that is. One of the, the cool things I also got to do this week is visit the Ivy Tech Life Sciences Center, a place that the county had a big part in assisting with nearly 20 years ago. And it's those sorts of partnerships, the things that we offer, literally in the parking lot at Ivy Tech that day, there were folks getting CDL licenses and certification. There were folks at the Life Sciences Center getting training in their former advanced manufacturing hub on key things. We've got to kind of have an eyeball to that because that entire corridor has so much going on, not to mention the bus line that we were able to assist with last year. In addition to that, I've begun the work of helping departments with their budget requests. Per Michelle's message that went out with those shared folders, I met with Extension already. I'll meet tomorrow with Legal and the Public Defender's Office. I know they're looking forward to, to my visit. And I look forward to continuing to do this, to touch base with departments as a liaison. One of the cool things about Extension is we talked about their impact. I think they're kind of an unsung department at times, and they maintain a lower profile with us, but out in the community, they don't. Their impact on families is huge. And then that evening, I got to accompany my youngest as she turned in her 4H projects, two of them. And I saw that impact firsthand, where they ask rigorous, tough questions of a, you know, a rising fifth grader about this project that person has worked on. This is tremendous leadership training for our youth. They have such an influence on families, and I just want to salute that as much I can. Last thing, and I'll stop, is that this Friday night, I'll be sleeping outside for Beacon. If you are a person that wants to help someone sleeping out, I think Counselor Iverson is doing it this year. And he and I get into a rivalry on that. So if you, whichever you like better, donate to one of us or the other, or both will accept it.
No, 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 I need the money.
And so it's tremendously important to support our not-for-profits. Beacon is first on the ground in all things with that working with other partners, and we'll be out there helping them out. Thank you.
Could I say one more thing? I forgot.
Yeah.
So I forgot to mention and remind people about the fireworks this year. So they'll be at the Friday night. Speaking of Friday night, that's what reminded me, it'll be Friday night at the fairgrounds, and it will be donations. That's what they're taking, not, they're not charging an amount. So it'll be donations.
Good to know.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, Counselor Iverson.
All right. Thank you, folks. It is hot out there, and we are so thankful to our emergency management team, led by Director Jamie Nabel, to set out the cooling stations. And of course, emergency management here in Monroe County is working with our partners at the Monroe County Fire Protection District, that's Chief Dustin Dillard, as well as our Monroe County Public Libraries, all three of them with Director Greer-Carson. And we're so thankful that those facilities are going to be open. You can find that list on the Monroe County website or by following the Emergency Management Department on Facebook. They have been diligently putting up a lot of really helpful information. And those cooling stations are open late. Some of those are open till 9:00 PM. So, you know, as you are checking up on your neighbors and you're making sure that your neighbors are doing okay in this heat, make sure to keep that in mind, that our library branches and our Fire Protection District stations are open for that purpose. The second item that I wanted to raise is even in this heat, we know that there are 466 people who are actively homeless in our region. This is heat stroke type weather, and if you cannot cool down, you cannot go to your house with air conditioning like many of us are going to go to tonight, that is a problem. That being said, the current federal administration is looking to cut $27 million from homeless assistance grants. This will directly impact people that are experiencing homelessness in our community, in particular, the most vulnerable. We know that the current action by this corrupt administration is looking to end the housing opportunities for persons with AIDS. They are looking to end funding for the National Homelessness Data Center, and they are also putting at risk rapid rehousing. This allows folks like Beacon to identify those experiencing homelessness and rapidly get them into air conditioning during the summer months, get them into the heating during the winter months, and all of that is at risk. Last year, in this community, we rapidly rehoused 319 people. Let me reiterate that there are 466 people actively homeless. The majority of people that we are finding out there who are experiencing active homelessness are being rapidly rehoused. But if this federal funding disappears, it's going to be a huge problem. So that's why Counsel, Counselman Deckard and I are going to be sleeping out to support Friends' Place. This is the region's largest shelter for women. That is so important. So many of these shelters in our region cater to men, and that can be a dangerous situation for women who are in this situation. It is also an LGBTQ plus-affirming shelter, so it is one of the only shelters that is welcoming in our area. That is incredibly important. So I urge you to not give Counselman Deckard any dollars on the Beacon website, and instead invest heavily in Counselman Iverson because I just don't have the, the tan that Counselman Deckard has. So I need to get out there and work on it. So, but in all seriousness, there are people that are going to be outside tonight. There's going to be people outside tomorrow night, and we need to make sure that we have the resources for them. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Henry.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll keep my comments brief, other than to say, I think, Peter, you sold it for varied reasons. I'll be contributing to you. But all right, on to it. I will focus my attention on the liaison work I do for the county. With the emergency management, the EMAC, we had our meeting last week. And I would anticipate a after-action review of the tornado activity sometime in October. We're still recovering. So, you know, it's hard to talk about something we're still doing in terms of it already being over. But in speaking with the EMAC members, I, I hope that by October, October, we start rounding out the reporting on what, what well, what could be improved, and how we prepare for the next one when that occurs. And I say when because that's how emergency managers think. We, we assume the, not if, but when the next disaster strikes. I would also want to highlight to the council that in terms of their budgeting and meeting with the budget, questions for the EMAC, that, you know, the EMAC program continues to replace sirens in the county, which we absolutely rely on for our early warning for tornadoes. And so I'd expect to see another round of requests for siren replacement as a major ticket item in their budget for this year. Related, I wanted to congratulate the first six members of the CERT or Community Emergency Response Team Program that went through training with EMAC and the Monroe Fire Protection District. The CERT program is an all-volunteer program. Trainees take nine modules on things like how to turn off gas lines in neighborhoods or help to do that very first responding activity for friends and neighbors as they're awaiting fire and EMS and police response. It is a rather old program that FEMA has supported in the country for about 40 years. As a, you may, if you have ever seen anyone wearing like a green helmet and green vest, that's probably a CERT volunteer. We haven't had a, a chapter here as active lately, but it has been invigorated. It's just a good example of another program at the federal level that fund, from FEMA that funds activities in our community. And the first six of them are ready for the next thing that happens. I also want to highlight something from elections. This is a very bipartisan statement, which all elected officials will benefit from, but is important to put on the radar in the community. The House Enrolled Act 1679 had changed the definition of a candidate to every elected official that earns $5,000 or more in salary as a elected person in the state of Indiana and requires all of us to file candidate finance reports, even if you're not running, even if you don't collect contributions. And if you haven't had a committee open in a long time because you've been in office for a while, you, you have to refile all that by July 1. I believe the Clerk's Office has some of that information. I know that's passed around from the Association of Indiana Counties today, but my recommendation as a former party chair is to call your respective party chairman or chairperson to make sure you're in compliance on July 1, and thank the state, the House for that lovely paperwork gift right at the 4th of July this year for everybody. Lastly, is I did have a chance to attend the CBC's meeting this week and talk convention center stuff. Very productive quarterly meeting, but some headliners, again, budget-wise that are coming is that we will see a substantial request for budget programming on marketing of the new center for the next two years that will be coming from CBC. Very important as they are starting to book in a facility that we are building as we speak, right? So I would expect to see that in their line items this year, as well as an awareness point that we have been at the former or the current visitor center on Old North 37 for 38 years before there was an I-69, or the internet, or, you know, the ways you'd find your way into Monroe County to go find stuff to do. So they are looking very much forward to moving the visitor center proximity to the new convention center that we can all trip over and experience basically like exhibits about our county and what the great things are to do around here all four seasons. But there'll be some budgetary changes in the way that that center is funded, just for the awareness of the council. I think that's it, other than to say have a good fourth, because I think the next time we meet will be after that, right? Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Counselor Hawke.
Yes, I'll tell you what I did. I had a good time. I had my daughters in town, and we went from place to place to place. And everywhere we went, people were there wanting to come and talk about Monroe County government. And I just love talking about Monroe County government and what's going to happen with their taxes and what's going to happen with their business or whatever. And, you know, you get the same, the same kind of wonderful people coming up to talk to you, whether it's at the Monroe County History Center, which, by the way, hopefully you've all been there because that, those dollars support our county history center. But it is a lovely gathering of the entire community of, of every sort. I mean, all different kinds of interests. And, and they will literally come up to you and say, I know you. Well, what about this and that? And you better be ready with an answer because they expect you to know something about it. And then if you go to Eltville, let me tell you, you go to the Caffeinated Cook if you want to talk to the locals, or go to the Village Inn. I mean, they literally come up and ask you questions or, or say thank you. And so rather than going to meetings, I've just been going and having a good time. And I don't apologize for that. It was, it has been a wonderful time. But I will go on to say some of the other things I've been doing. And one of which, I want to encourage everyone to go to that Department of Local Government Finance site and look at the, I, I sat through several hours last week on their updates on Senate Bill 1 and what was the other one, 1427, because Senate Bill 1 was voted on, was passed by the governor first, and the other one, 14, what came in second. There were some changes in the 1427 to Senate Bill 1. So you've got to read Senate Bill 1, then you've got to look to see where the changes are. And folks, they were talking so fast, it, it was just difficult. You couldn't take the, the notes quick enough. And that was, a, a part of that was in the morning session had to do with, of course, I'm the liaison for the assessor's office, and there was so much in there of responsibilities for the assessor and things that they must do, changes, changes, changes. So everything you thought you knew, just pick it up and start learning everything again, because there's a lot of changes about what's going to happen. You know, You know, the chart that they have, one of the sessions I sat in, you can see how assessed values could continue to grow. But because the net assessed value is not growing at the same pace as it grows because they're making so many adjustments to how much the individual taxpayer will have to be paying over a certain number of years. So that's something for us to all recognize, because that's important for us to know. There was also something in there in one of the sessions, was that it's up to the auditor's office. I mean, they've got a lot of responsibility to make sure that everyone who is entitled to that $300 credit for their taxes for this coming year, it's either $300 or 10%, whichever is less. And no, you don't have to go apply for it. If you already have a homestead, then you are qualified for it. But the auditor staff has got to go through there and see which one gets the 300, which ones get the 10% if it's less. So they've got a big job waiting on them. And not only that, folks, the job that they have put, that, of course, we don't have it yet, because that's not going to hit until we get ready for 2028. But we better be preparing for it. And that is this county council is going to be, there's not going to be a lot of time for fun, folks. It's going to be really tough, and we've got to be ready to go. So the other thing is, the fair, as you said, we're going to have the fireworks, and the fair is about to start. And so the Forge people are getting their, all of their exhibits ready, and everyone will be out there at the fairgrounds. So I hope that it doesn't get so hot that we can't stand it. And I look forward to seeing everybody out there. My daughter has promised to take me there in the heat, so. And I thank all of you for the time that you've spent doing the work of county government. It's a big job, and we're privileged to be a part of it.
And if they see you at the fair, they should come to you and ask you all the questions, since you like talking to the people, right? That was really fun. Thanks, Councilor Hawke. All right, so I will close out, because my colleague said all the things that I wanted to say. And I hope these guys get the funds that they need, and Councilor Henry can, like, donate to both in their quest for a very serious cause. So I just wanted to, just real quick, just say thanks to Councilor Iverson for stepping in in my absence a couple of weeks ago while I was kind of recovering at home. I'm back, and so I'm a little slow to getting back to myself, but I'm getting better. And to those, and I'm looking at the auditor's office, I owe you a visit, and so it's coming soon. The other thing, again, I wanted to reiterate the fact that in my particular district, Monroe County Fire Protection District, Station 22 has the cooling station that's off of Kennedy Drive. Those folks say we haven't had any visitors just yet, but again, it is hot. I personally like this weather, but for a multitude of reasons, we all need to stay safe. And those that cannot avoid this need to be able to stay cool and healthy as much as possible. So for those, again, can't reiterate enough to make sure that you go to the, one of the cooling stations that the county has to offer until the 28th. The other thing that I wanted to add, since I am a member of Sofia Travis Grant Committee, and there is an event that's taking place right about now, started about 5:30. I just want to give a special shout-out to My Sister's Closet for, they are having an event, a fundraising event, as well for their impending move that they will have to do as well. But one of the things that they are doing is unveiling a sculpture. That was actually partially funded by some of the funds from the Sofia Travis Grant Committee. So hopefully, we will end here soon. And, you know, those that are able to can go down to the event that started at 5:30, and I think it ends at 7:00. So I appreciate that. The last thing that I will say in getting out into the district, I just wanted to say Juneteenth isn't a dirty word, and it's part of history. And so it was really good to see the city of Bloomington continue to celebrate that a couple of weeks ago now. And Councilor Henry was there. And then on actual Juneteenth last Thursday, IU's campus, Neil Marshall Black Cultural Center, had a celebration as well, and Councilor Decker was there doing a cake swap. So that was really fun. The other thing that I wanted to say that I continue to see in government, although, like, all jokes aside, is the fact that I hope we can continue to have civil conversations and civil disagreements with things and not put people on blast for things that we might not necessarily agree with. I think we can have a difference of opinions. And, you know, folks are looking out for themselves in all different ways. However, when we get into public office, we take the good, the bad, and the ugly with a lot of different things. Sometimes the ugly kind of outweighs the good at some times, and the noise happens. But I don't think that people are doing anything in ill will or malicious intent. So I never want to use my seat that I'm sitting in to disparage another group or a particular person for some of the things that they do or might perceive to be done, and not give them an opportunity to speak on that. So I just want to make sure that we are being a little careful with how we are coming out and with going after certain groups and organizations. And I just feel that, as an elected, I would never sit in my seat and really disparage a group for something that they, that I might disagree with. So that is, take that as you will with that, but that's just something that's been on my heart